City, no place for me to go in my own unit. There was no place that had any less sound. I checked different rooms to see, well, maybe I can sleep on the floor here. There was no place that had a diminished sound. And if there was, it wasn't a space like a closet that was big enough to sleep in. There was just no escape to that. So I felt trapped and helpless during that. During the fireworks, when the debris from the fireworks sprayed against my windows, I was just terrified that they would break any minute because I thought, how could I do something and what could I do at midnight? And who could come at midnight? And this is February. A broken window would have been pretty disastrous. So there was a lot of anxiety and discomfort.
And do these impacts on your mental wellbeing continue to this day or have they abated?
Certainly, they have, some have abated, yes. And I work very hard for that in terms of the mental wellbeing. It's still, I jump a lot when I hear a loud horn. And also when I get this smell of gas, definitely I have a physical reaction, which is quite distressing.
And Ms. Lee, I will ask you the same thing. What was the impact, if any, on your physical wellbeing of living through the protests of January and February of this year?
During the time of the occupation, I struggled to call it a protest because I know what a protest is. But it was incredibly difficult to get anything done because of the noise. There was a significant impact on things like focus and, you know, just even living day to day. Sleep deprivation was one of the first things that affected me personally. And it also affected the animals that I live with as well. They seemed quite distressed. But for me personally, it was almost impossible to get a good night's sleep or a full night's sleep, if any. And if anything, it would be low quality and often interrupted by a sudden loud horn. And when it was quiet, and because there were brief periods where it was quiet, I was riddled with the anxiety that the horns were going to start again. And when the horn started again, it was left, we were left wondering, you know, when they would stop, if they would ever stop again. And yeah, it was just day to day, living within my own home, living in fear of the sound and the intrusion really that they posed just being outside on our streets. Yeah, and further to that, it was unpleasant, to say the least, to exit my home, but it was something I did anyways as I didn't feel like it was... The whole situation was wrong and I felt almost a little bit of defiance, wanting to go outside and continue to live my life as best I could. And when I did, oftentimes I was harassed for wearing a mask or being, I was told to smile more under my mask or, you know, just these kinds of comments that wouldn't have otherwise occurred and on a quiet, normal walk, day by day. And I think what was one of the worst things was whenever you chose, well, whenever I chose not to engage with the individuals that were occupying my neighborhood, they would, they would blast their horns at me with a smile on their faces. And then they would cheer in unison and almost take joy in the, in my flinching and my recoiling from the noise that I had been essentially experiencing nonstop for the entire duration of the events that occurred.
And so can you confirm as well that you live in the downtown area south of Wellington?
Yes, I live near Laurier Street in Centertown.
Thank you. Mr. Delaron, can you describe for us the impact, if any, of living through the protests in Ottawa on your ability to go about your daily life?
Yes. I, I worked very hard to be independent and safe as a person with a disability. That objective is very important to me. And every success in reaching that objective is coveted. So that was gone. I was trained to walk with the traffic, to walk with the flow, to negotiate and keep myself safe on the street. Of course, there was no traffic or no flow, no indicator. Or if it's idling, I wasn't sure if these big vehicles overhanging a small sidewalk, if they decided to suddenly shift or change if they could see me. So it was terrifying. The sound was so high that I could not hear any chimes or signals that we use at the ends of the street to tell us that it's safe to cross. That, that was just not available. It was, it just was not safe in my, in my world. Also, in terms of independence, I do everything myself. I order my groceries, I order prescriptions and, but, and I take public transportation or private transportation to go to meetings, to go to appointments, to do my daily business. So I had everything set up for myself as an independent person living alone in downtown Ottawa, which provided such good services. But immediately, immediately, there was no taxi, no Uber, no paratransport, no grocery delivery, which I depended on, no taxi even to go and get some, no, no prescription delivery. Some way had to be figured out how to obtain all the necessities of life. The restrictions on my ability to get food was gone or was there. So that was the impact in terms of my mobility. So I found myself trapped.
And can I confirm, Ms. Delaron, I noticed you walk with a white cane. Can you confirm, do you have a visual impairment?
Yes.
Okay. And does that visual impairment then cause you to rely on sounds and hearing in order to get around outside?
That is a huge, huge assist in, for me to have safe mobility outside and for me to remain independent, yes. Very critical are the sounds.
And so how did the sounds change then from kind of normal day to day to when the protest was happening in January and February?
There, there was absolutely no ability to negotiate my environment by using sound. The, the sounds of the horns, the sounds of the very, very loud music, the sounds of the people with lots of voices coming from all different places, all was disconcerting and just completely eliminated my ability to negotiate my environment independently.
Ms. Lee, can you describe for us what you, what you saw, what you heard, what you experienced when you did go outside and walk, walk the streets during the protest?
Well, it was the middle of winter. So really, the first thing you noticed when you stepped outside was all of the snow because services weren't able to be rendered due to the occupation that was going on. And further to that, the snow was often colored yellow or brown due to the public urination and defecation that took place gratuitously, often alongside of my building and just quite literally anywhere you walked, on every corner. And on these intersections, oftentimes there were illegal bonfires and yeah, just trash burning right next to, you know, cans of fuel or near the same areas where these individuals would later set off fireworks. And I just remember feeling like it was such a surreal sight. It almost felt like you were in something like The Purge because it, though I didn't often see direct acts of violence, it was, there was a certain chaos on the streets. And that feeling of chaos and rule breaking and law breaking gradually increased as things progressed. Yeah. Just, I need a moment. Just sort of on my daily walks, you know, going to the gym, getting groceries, running errands, you often, I often encountered individuals that were associated with the occupation. And being, you know, I'm a small Asian woman. I wore a mask most of the time due to the situation that was going on. It was, like I said, it made you a target because it signaled to the people on our streets that we were not supportive of their cause and that we were not one of them. And in turn, as I mentioned before, they would increase their honking and target their honking and shout at us, shout at me about how they were doing things for us and that they were fighting for our freedoms when at the same time I was unable to walk the streets feeling safe, really, because it wasn't, it didn't feel safe, you know? My guard was up all the time and you had to watch every detail so carefully because these people would just approach me out of nowhere. And you didn't, you really didn't know what they were going to do to you. And especially after I took action as an individual, it became different, being a person walking on the streets. But I was never deterred from going outside. There was one, only one moment where I was very, very afraid after my identity and name had been made public and I had really covered myself up completely so that I was completely unrecognizable to the point where my neighbors saw this and were very confused when I said hello to them. But after that, I think I realized there was almost a protection in the notoriety that I had gained. And I don't know, I felt like it was almost safer for me to walk the streets than the people that I lived around because of my position in the whole situation. But that being said, like when it comes to my day to day life, I'm a really friendly person. I know all of my neighbors, well, I can't say all of them, you know? But I know a good few of them. And one of, like really, one of the, my, my like daily joys is chit chatting with them in the elevator and seeing them on the street and saying hello. And what was truly, truly terrible about this time was seeing how people I knew were being affected and noting, knowing that for every one person that I knew that was going through a difficult time because of what was going on, there were 20 other people that I didn't know that were going through the same thing. I knew people that were being pushed out of their homes because they were literally having mental breakdowns because of the stress and the noise and just the terror they felt from the situation. And I don't think any, anyone or anything can discount those real feelings that people experienced and people had. And because of the action I took, I had encouraged a lot of my friends and neighbors to reach out to me and tell me their stories because it was so important for people to know that this was a serious thing that was going on, that people were being really terribly affected by it. One of my neighbors, she had just had a newborn baby. Her name's Hazel. She was maybe six months old at this time. But I remember, like, I've, I've watched Hazel. She's a really sweet baby. But my friend, she had told me that the noise was so terrible but that sometimes just to get her to sleep, she had to take the baby out into the hallway as far as the window, from the windows as possible, and bounce her in the hallways to try and get her to sleep before bringing her back into the apartment where there was just the unrelenting horns. And other neighbors who told me for just, you know, a good two, three hours of nap, whatever they could get, they would go down to the parking lot and sleep in their car because it was the only place that they could escape to. And for me, second to the hallway, my bathroom was a little quieter. So I got some peace there as well.
So would you say that you felt unsafe walking the streets?
I, I didn't feel, I didn't feel safe. But it's hard to describe it as unsafe at the same time because I was actively being so cognizant of my surroundings. I'm fast, I can move very fast. So, you know, I'm, I was always ready to, you know, take myself out of a situation where something might happen. And you know what, like, a lot of the times when they're bouncing their trucks and their cars and I don't know how to describe it other than like roaring at us, like roaring at me with like these large giant vehicles, you know? It's, the idea was to move quick and get where you needed to go. And you know, that was, that was the intention. And that's what you really had to do, I think, to stay safe. Because when you didn't take your time, they would always get to you. Like not, maybe not in the sense that you're thinking, but they would try and come up to you and convince you that they were doing the right thing. And they would say to me, like, they, I, like, on more than one occasion, I would try and plead with them because, you know, there's a certain desperation in being left in that kind of situation where the people that are supposed to help you weren't helping you. And it was just ongoing for really, and it was going to be an unknown period of time because really, every day I woke up and I hoped that it was over and it never was. Sorry, I lost my train of thought a little there.
It's okay. Ms. Delaron, would you say that you felt unsafe walking the streets?
Yes, for two reasons. One, of course, the inability to negotiate those streets safely because of lack of assisted, well, lack of sound was, was the big thing. Also, being very concerned about what was underfoot because there was debris on the streets and it was winter and icy and slippery. So, and then always vigilant that someone was, was going to approach. On, on, on an occasion, there was a person who kept jumping in front of me. I was with someone else. I could only go out if someone came with me. And this person kept jumping in front and didn't allow me to pass. So when he was confronted, finally it stopped, but then sent messages. Well, I love you anyway, they said. So that was a bit intimidating. And so in that way, I, I didn't feel safe for those two reasons. I didn't have all the faculties I normally use. And secondly, that someone was going to approach me and either I was going to be accidentally hurt or I would, or my big worries that I would bump into and hurt them too. So always vigilant and concerned. Does that mean I was feeling safe? No, no, I wasn't. I just thought if I didn't have to be out, I would not go out.
And Ms. Delaron, was there anything else that you experienced that you would consider to be a threat to health or safety?
The Sunday after the, the vehicles came in and occupied so close to where, where I live, the relentless noise was just so unbearable and I was so exhausted from it. And I, I called and begged a friend, could you just please, I, I know you have to walk in and get me out, can you? Can, excuse me, can you just please come and get me out? And she did. And two days later, I had, we both had COVID. There were so many people on the street rushing toward us saying we don't have to wear those masks, there's people around. Did I get it from them? I don't know, you know? But it meant that I was completely, completely stuck. I couldn't leave my home. I couldn't ask anybody to, to come and help. I couldn't go and stay with somebody else. I couldn't do anything. I had to be there to isolate for, for the, for at least those 10 days. So once again, there was no place to go, no place to hide. It just went on and on.
And Ms. Lee, what actions, if any, did you take because of your disruptions to your daily life?
Well, the first action I took was really what I consider to be, it was really important to me, I think, because of the nature of the occupation and what was going around in the media and the news. I thought it was really important for me to walk the streets and experience things firsthand. So I did, I did that almost every day and I took pictures and I took videos and I remembered what I saw. And I spoke with people. I spoke with people that were living on our streets illegally. I spoke with the people that were stationed on intersections to protect us and...
Sorry, do you mean the police?
Yes, the police. And I just, that was really the first action I took, just having my own account of things and really living through it myself. And like I said before, I really genuinely like love Ottawa. I love my neighbors and they mean a lot to me, even if they are somewhat strangers in a sense. And because of this closeness I had, I heard a lot of their stories and more so, I heard a lot of their frustrations. And as egg throwing began to occur from my building, I felt that, you know, we really needed a medium to at least express what was happening to us so that we could feel at the very least heard and maybe diffuse some of the tensions.
Can you describe, sorry, can you describe what you mean by the egg throwing?
Well, you know, there were very large trucks parked everywhere. And in some of these instances, they were parked right next to some high-rise condo buildings. And as a result, someone, some people may have gotten some cartons of eggs and, you know, had their little retaliation in frustration because really, what else could they do? And when that incident occurred, I remember the police actually came to my building to inquire about the egg throwing as a complaint had been made by the truckers. And I remember that I felt it as an affront and that a lot of my neighbors felt it as an affront as well when they were investigating something like this in the light of everything that was happening to us and what they were really ignoring in a lot of their statements and releases to the public. And as a result, I decided to organize a meeting with a number of residents in my building with some Ottawa Police Community Liaison Officers just so we could have a recorded account of what our experiences were and really to, again, diffuse the tension and really concretely say, you know what's happening here. We are telling you this, this is our experience and we really desperately need help because things are, things have gone on too long and the residents, honestly, they had wanted to fight back because they felt that nobody else was doing anything for them.
And what was the result of that meeting?
Following that meeting, maybe 20 of my neighbors showed up and more had sent their stories through messages or otherwise through me. And we had communicated everything to the officers so that, you know, again, it was recorded and, you know, all of us were there to attest to the fact that this happened and they know what's going on because we felt really and truly abandoned at that point in time. And after that, I ended up becoming the lead plaintiff in the class action, which brought my name and person to more public attention.
Okay, so we'll get to that in a little bit. I just wanted to get a sense for the honking. You've both mentioned the sound of the honking. Do you have a sense for when it was, was it, was it all the time? Was it louder during the day? Was it just as loud at night? Can you give us a sense of that, Ms. Lee, and then Ms. Delaron after?
It was, it's, sometimes it's hard because that whole month essentially feels like a bit of a blur sometimes. But I do remember when it started on Friday night, it felt like, in my memory, that it never stopped, really.
So would that be Friday, the 27th of January?
Yes, that's when they began to roll in. And I remember when that happened, that was, my feeling was that this is going to be a doozy, you know? Bad things are coming. But yeah, it was constant. It was like from day to night, even if it wasn't for every second, it was at least every other minute.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Delaron, do you have a sense for when the honking was louder? Was it constant 24 hours a day? Was it less at night? Was it the same?
When, when the trucks and other vehicles came into my area on the Friday evening, it was very loud. And on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, I could sense, I could sense the excitement and the electricity in the air. And at the beginning, I thought, I am so happy to be in a country where there's freedom of expression, freedom of speech, freedom to assemble. And that, that sentiment started to crumble as the loudness was all night and all that weekend. That's why I begged my friend, can you just come and take me out for, for a short time even? So I don't have to, to hear this. And the sounds continued constantly until, at night. And they may have been somewhat diminished because there was, were crescendos all during the day and toward the evening in particular, and, and then all night. When the injunction was put in place, then it abated a bit between 11 o'clock at night and then 7 o'clock. I could hear activity out on the street. I could hear a huge megaphone starting to advise, it seemed to me, a rolling thunder of horn blowing, starting at 7:30 in the morning, and then the loud, loud music, which you could hear every word of the music they were, the songs that were being sung. So your question in terms of how loud it was, how continuous it was, it was continuous. There was an abatement of horn blowing in such a crescendo between those hours, 7, 11 at night and 7 in the morning. But the idling continued under my window, just with these huge vehicles, the sound of the idling echoing down in the canyon of our, our buildings all night. So there was no respite from an assault on hearing. I tried to wear earplugs, but they kept falling out. And, and then I worried if I wore an earplug, I wouldn't be able to hear the smoke alarm. I wouldn't be able to hear if somebody was pounding on my door to evacuate because there was something, a fire or an explosion outside our door. So I was caught in between. And of course, I slept with a mask on because of, because of trying to abate the smell of, of the diesel and the other smells that were coming up in, in through the vents.
So I want to show a map now that's been produced at Exhibit D of the affidavit sworn by Erin Bernard. And he's the managing director of Spatial Media. And for the party's benefit, it's at document COM 50736, if you want to look at that. So this was based on, this map was created based on, yeah, you can click on that, based on data that was collected through the two weeks, the first two weeks of the convoy. And what we see here is just a standard traffic noise in Ottawa during the day. And this is just based on known decibel readings throughout the area. And the decibel readings were collected at different points in downtown Ottawa. And this is a visual... And this is a visualization of that data that was collected. So if we go to week daytime, week one daytime, thank you. So this is what it shows on this map based on decibel readings collected on the ground in different locations through the first week of the, of the convoy. And if we just zoom into, it's a bit of a heat map, so the darker the color, the louder the decibels. And if you can just zoom in a little bit more, okay, that's good. And so you had said, Ms. De La Rond, that you live on Laurier. Can you tell us approximately a, a close intersection that you would be by, just so we can locate that on the map?
Yes, a close would be Laurier and Kent.
Laurier and Kent?
Yes.
Okay, so if we can just zoom in on Laurier and Kent. You just have to zoom in a bit there, yeah. Yeah, just move over to the left. Yep. So we got Lion, we got Kent, and that's Laurier. Where's Laurier? Right there. Okay, yeah, so Laurier and Kent. We see between 90 decibels and if you go up about 100, so between 90 and 100, okay? And it says, "Similar to a lawnmower." Does that accord with your recollection of the sound? Says as loud as, "Similar to a lawnmower."
For myself?
Yes.
It was beyond the lawnmower.
Okay, so you would say it was louder in your experience?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Lee, an intersection that you are near, so we can kind of locate you on the map?
The intersection I live near would be Laurier Avenue West and Bank Street.
Laurier and Bank, okay, so just over to the right a little bit on the mouse, yeah, right there. That's the corner. Okay, so again, similar, 100 to 110 decibels, similar to a lawnmower. Does that accord with your kind of recollection of what it was like?
Yes, however, I would like to note that there were points in time where, like Ms. De La Rond said, there were crescendos. And during those crescendos in particular, there was a roving train horn attached to a truck. And when that truck was in our area, I would express that it was much louder and much more disruptive than the lawnmower.
Okay. And we're going to hear one of the recordings, if we go down to the blue there, you can see some of the recordings that were taken. So that one is at, at 100 as well in that zone. So it's similar to the area that you were in in terms of the decibel readings. And we're just going to play it so that everyone here can experience a little bit of what you experienced. Does that accord with your recollection of the sounds when you were either in your building or walking outside? Ms. De La Rond?
Yes, that, that does accord with, with the sounds that were always present in my, in my building, in my unit. Except there's some sounds there, not there, that were even louder and more unnerving. When you hear this, and it's 24 hours, it is just, it's damaging. It's damaging to the nerves. It's damaging to, to, to my health and wellbeing. So it's, it's shocking. So it does accord, but there was more. There were times when it was more than this.
Do you agree with that, Ms. Lee?
I would agree with that. I would note that many of the trucks in my vicinity had what we would describe as aftermarket horns, where the horns attached to the vehicle were much, much louder than a standard vehicle would have. And several of these trucks were idled very close to where I lived and resulted in a much more deafening sound.
Okay. And Ms. Lee, you had indicated that you took videos and photos when you walked around. I just want to take you to some of those photos if we, if we can.
Yep.
It's COM 50713. And maybe you can just, when it comes up, describe to us what we're seeing here and when it was taken and, and why you took the photo. It's ending in 713. Okay, yeah, let's see the whole, yeah, there we go.
So this photo was taken on the corner of Kent and Laurier. I took the photo because I thought that the removing of the tires was a very clear message from the occupiers that they were here to stay. Now, this vehicle in particular was removed sometime later, but I believe this was near the beginning of the occupation, perhaps around February 3rd.
Okay, thank you. And then the next photo is ending in 728, so COM 50728. Okay, and do you recall when this photo was taken and what we're seeing here?
I don't remember the exact date. It was either February 17th or 18th, if I'm not mistaken. This morning, this was after the injunction date. The occupiers on Kent Street, it was a very strong encampment, I would describe it as. And they were very much rooted in their position. During the injunction period, there was a, I believe this was like a Friday or Saturday morning, but they had collectively blown their horns at about 6:59 a.m. And obviously, it awoke myself and many other residents in the area. And at this point, we had been, what, 20 days into the occupation? And I, for one, was desperate, not quite defeated, but also very angry. And I think at that point, I, the desperation was enough where I stood on the corner of Laurier and Kent. I left my, my home at about 7:30, and I stayed there for about 30 minutes to an hour just waiting for them to blow their horns because I was frustrated. And I wanted there to be evidence, firsthand evidence, of them defying the injunction order, them breaking the laws they were breaking. And I wanted to know for myself who exactly was there so that nobody could say otherwise. And I decided to take photos of the vehicles that were there, collect their information. And that was something that made them very upset as really was an open act of defiance.
And is this truck parked on the sidewalk?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and was that common for trucks to be up parked on the sidewalks?
At this time, it was. I also, on numerous occasions, witnessed trucks driving along the sidewalks as well.
Okay. And I see we are running out of time. So perhaps I will then invite the parties to ask you additional questions. Thank you very much. Before we go, is there anything else that you would like to tell the commission? I do want to give you an opportunity, if there's anything else we haven't discussed that you would like to discuss.
I would like to quickly note that in this, in this image, the vehicle next to the white truck, the red truck, on the same day, due to my taking pictures, the man in the red truck was inside of his vehicle, and he actually had backed his vehicle into me. I moved out of the way, but I presume it was for taking pictures of his license plate and what was in his vehicle. I also captured video of, as I approached the vehicle after he had sort of backed into me. I didn't want him to be able to claim that it wasn't him in the vehicle. So I captured the driver in the video as well. And while I did so, he aggressively opened his door at me in the car. And at that point, all of the trucks in the area began blaring their horns at me. And there was another individual who had exited his vehicle and decided to start shouting at me, giving me the finger, and say that, that the man in the truck hadn't done anything. After I had called the police, he was yelling in the streets that the truck hadn't moved in over an hour, which I had direct video evidence proving that it was not true. So it just really showed to me personally that these people were willing to do anything and say anything to help each other get away with anything.
And Ms. De La Rond, is there anything we haven't covered that you would like to say?
You know, I think you've done a very good job. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I now invite the parties to ask you some questions.
Okay, now for cross-examination, have the parties agreed on a, on an order for the cross-examination? Seeing no response, I will simply call on the parties to cross-examine in accordance with the, the time that has been allocated. So I think the first cross-examination is to be carried out by the convoy organizers. So who's going to be doing this? Okay, so Mr. Miller, you're, you're on. You have 20 minutes if you need it. And given that Commission Counsel has gone a bit over time, I even give you a little bit of leeway, but not very much.
So good morning. Ms. Lee, I'd like to start with you, if that's okay. So, Ms. Lee, I understand you're 21 years of age, is that correct?
I'm now 22.
Now 22. And at the time of the events in question, being January and February of this year, you were 21?
Correct.
All right. And you said already you're a public servant, you worked for the Government of Canada?
Yes, that's correct.
And you worked for the Government of Canada during the protest period, is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And what do you do for your employment for the Government of Canada?
I'm a data analyst.
And with which ministry or department are you with?
Objection. What's the relevance to this line of question, Commissioner?
I'm not sure it's relevant or not, but is, it seems to me that it's not a, not unreasonable.
Well, I personally don't feel there's, I, the actions I took was in my capacity as an individual citizen of Ottawa and not related to my work or any other activities.
Right, I understand that. But what department were you with? And what were you doing for work for the Government of Canada at the time?
I was...
I understand that you know NDP Member of Provincial Parliament for Ottawa, Senator Joel Harden, is that correct?
Correct.
And from some public articles, I also understand that you were introduced to lawyer Mr. Paul Champ sometime between January 28th, 2022, and February 4th, 2022. Is that correct?
Could you repeat the dates, please?
January 28th, 2022, and February 4th, 2022.
Correct.
Okay. And what date were you introduced to Mr. Champ?
I believe it was, it was, it was a Friday, so whichever date that Friday fell on.
Okay. And so someone introduced you to Mr. Champ, correct?
Mr. Champ had reached out to me.
Okay. And is it not true that it was Ottawa City Councilor Catherine McKennie who put you in touch with Mr. Champ?
That is untrue.
Okay. And I understand that you were the recent co-chair of the 2002 Leaders Summit for Action Chinese Canadians Together, is that correct?
That's correct.
And as part of that summit, I understand you gave a video statement about how you became who you are today. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay. And it focused on the protest in Ottawa on became and becoming the lead plaintiff in the class action that you filed, is that right?
Correct.
And there you described becoming the lead plaintiff in the class action as a fateful and surreal story, is that right?
Correct.
And you said there you had the opportunity to make a difference, right?
Correct.
And you said that the lawyers needed a plaintiff?
Correct.
Right. And so you were asked to be the lead plaintiff, is that fair?
Correct.
Right. And was there any other, but else, other than Mr. Champ, who was asking you to be the lead plaintiff?
Emily Townman, who works with Paul Champ.
All right. And so Mr. Champ reached out to you randomly? How did Mr. Champ get in touch with you?
It was as a result of the meeting I had organized with the Ottawa Police. One of my fellow residents and neighbor was a lawyer who was aware of the action being taken.
Okay. And so I just want to take you back as well to that speech you gave with the Leaders Summit for Action for Chinese Canadians Together. Just let me know if this is correct, what you said. This is how you described the protest. It was insane. It was the strangest Twilight Zone purge scenario where people weren't quite purging, but the opportunity was there because there was just no laws being enforced. So it was this crazy, crazy thing with hot tubs, with right-wing extremists, and then right-wing moderates as well. And then you're just your confused average grandmother saying, "Oh, isn't this really a great time? I wonder what the air raid sirens are for." Those are your statements, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And when you say purge scenario for the folks at home, as well as anybody here, I take it you're referring to the film series The Purge, right?
Yes, just in reference to the lack of laws that were in place.
Right. And it was your belief that the protest provided a purge opportunity, is that fair?
I would not say that the protest or occupation provided a purge opportunity, but the, what I witnessed on the streets day to day was very reminiscent of that kind of lawless world where open fires were being held, laws were being broken in front of police officers who were not doing anything to combat them, and just a general sense and lack of disregard for public areas and really the people that lived there.
Okay. But again, you said earlier and you admitted that you stated it was the strangest Twilight Zone purge scenario where people weren't quite purging, but the opportunity was there, correct?
Yes.
Right. So you believed that the opportunity was there for a purge-type scenario, is that right?
I believe the opportunity was there, and it was an environment where these people who had been illegally occupying our streets felt that they had the, I don't know if this is the right word, they had the ability to do anything they wanted as they were not privy to the regulations that the rest of us members of society were. And I came to this conclusion in, through my witnessing of these crimes being committed, because really, they were crimes. And even speaking with these individuals directly, who had informed me that they were not going to face any consequences because they were protected.
Okay. So in the movie The Purge, you agree that it's about that for one day in the United States, called The Purge, that there are no laws in force and the population can commit murder, which is the purge, is that right?
That is correct, but I was not referencing the entirety of The Purge. It was a purge-like scenario where laws were not enforced specifically.
And a purge opportunity was available?
Yes, because laws were not being enforced.
Right. So people could potentially commit murder, that was your concern?
I did not make that statement.
All right. And you then, I understand from your evidence that you provided to the commission prior, from your statement, I understand that you started to hear honking on Friday, January 28th, right? Or January 28th, 2022?
Correct.
All right. And when you provided the statement to the commission, did you provide it yourself?
Yes.
They interviewed you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I understand that you obtained the injunction on February 5th, 2022.
I think it's February 4th.
February 4th, 2022, you obtained the injunction to stop the honking, is that right?
Pardon me, the 7th. Pardon me, February 7th.
The injunction was obtained and approved by the court on the 7th.
Well, I understand there was an interim injunction, approved for first two days, then on the 7th it was approved. Is that the correct facts or would...
No, that is not correct. Two days prior to the injunction being put in place, there was a deferral of the trial to that date where the injunction was eventually approved.
Trial. You said trial, I just want to clarify for the record. There was no trial, it was an application, correct?
Application, sorry, I'm not well-versed in law, I'm not a law student.
I understand. And then after you obtained the injunction, I understand that things got a little bit better, right?
For a brief period, shortly after the injunction, there was a clear silence from the noise that was previously constant. Shortly thereafter, there was a gradual ramp up in the honking again. But however, it was more strategic and intermittent than it was... the honking again, but however, it was more strategic and intermittent than it was previously, whereas it was constant.
Okay. And so you said you gave your statement to the Commission before you testified here today, right?
Yes.
And when you gave your statement, you knew you had to be truthful?
Yes.
And when you gave that statement, of course, you wanted to include all important observations and interactions that you had with the protesters, is that right?
I just want to clarify the statement being in reference, is that?
Sorry, I should clarify. She gave an anticipated statement, so it's a statement of anticipated evidence, not a witness statement. So it's not attributable to her, it's attributable to the Commission, and that is different from a witness statement, which is attributable to the witness.
Right.
So I just want to clarify that.
Sure. And so when you provided the Commission your statement, I take it that you would have told them all the important information that you wanted them to know?
As far as I was aware, yes, to the best of my ability.
Great. And...
I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner, I do want to interject here. Our rules provide that there can be no examination on a statement of anticipated evidence without leave, and I think leave needs to be sought if there's going to be questions about that.
Okay, I won't put the statement to her, I'll move on. I understand that you noticed the honking generally stopped after the injunction was granted, though some trucks still honked intermittently for short periods of time, is that right?
Correct.
All right. And so that's what happened after the injunction, is that correct?
To the best of my recollection, correct. That was the immediate aftermath.
All right. Now, between January 28th and February 5th, 2022, did you attend your employment at the Government of Canada?
I was working from home, though I struggled to maintain productivity due to the disturbances that were taking place.
Right. And at the Government of Canada, I take it that you are on salary, is that fair?
That is correct.
So between January 28th, 2022, and February 5th, 2022, you did not lose any income, is that fair?
That would be correct. There was a leave code that was applied for government employees that were affected by the situation.
Okay. And but prior to the situation as well, you were working from home, wasn't that also under the general COVID policy for all Government of Canada employees?
Could you clarify the question, please?
So prior, weren't you working from home prior to January 28th, 2022, anyway?
Yes.
Okay. And how long were you working from home from?
I had started a new position on January 10th with Shared Services Canada. Prior to that, I was employed working from home with another agency.
Okay. And what agency were you employed with before?
I was employed with the Canada Revenue Agency.
Okay, Canada Revenue Agency. And so from January 28th, 2022, and before, you were already working at home?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And moving on from sort of your background with working from home, I understand that you had the interactions with the protesters and you confronted them on Kent Street, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. And when you confronted those protesters, do you remember saying to them, which was recorded, go back to where the fuck you were from?
I may have said that.
Okay. And I take it that you never saw any of the... or never said to the Commissioner saw any protesters or truckers physically harm anyone, is that right?
There was only the... I would describe it as intimidation with a truck.
Okay. And you never said to the Commission, and nothing in that regard with respect to seeing protesters or truckers threatening to physically harm anyone either, did you?
I did not make that statement.
All right. And you didn't say to the Commission or see anything in your observations that could be classified as espionage or sabotage?
I'm sorry?
You didn't see anything that could be classified as espionage or sabotage?
No.
Thank you. And you didn't say to the Commissioner or observe any of the protesters or truckers destroy or light a fire or any buildings or anything like that?
Not inside of any buildings, no, just outside.
Outside. So you're saying that they were destroying the outside of buildings?
I did not say that. I said they were lighting fires outside of buildings, as in the bonfires that were all over the city.
Right. But they weren't trying to knock down any form of buildings or property or anything like that?
I can't comment to their intentions.
Well, I understand their intentions, but I submit you didn't see them do anything like that?
No, I just saw the fires, open fires.
Great. And you didn't see them try to destroy any other trucks or vehicles or light them afire or anything?
I did not.
Thank you. And so I just want to talk to you a little bit about that class action as well. So you became the lead plaintiff on February 4th when it was filed, correct?
Correct.
All right. And as of today, I understand there are only three other additional plaintiffs to that action, is that right?
Correct.
And the first one is Happy Goat Coffee Company, is that correct?
Correct.
And Happy Goat Coffee Company is a chain of coffee shops that has three coffee shops in the downtown area, is that fair?
As far as I know, correct.
Thank you. And the second plaintiff is that got added is a numbered company, but it operates as Union Local 613, and I understand that's a restaurant and bar on Somerset Street, is that right?
Correct.
All right. And the third plaintiff is a fellow by the name of Jeffrey Davani, is that right?
Correct.
And he's a bartender and server at a restaurant in Bywood Market?
My understanding is that he was employed in the Bywood Market.
Okay. And that he doesn't live in downtown Ottawa, though?
Yes.
Okay. And so after you got the injunction on February 5th, I understand that both yourself and Mr. Champ began to offer the protesters and truckers an agreement that they could sign to be released from your class action if they agreed to leave. Do you remember that?
I would like to clarify that the injunction was granted on the 7th.
Okay. But after the... on the beginning of the 5th as well, as I understand, you began to offer this release to the protesters and truckers, is that right?
Correct.
All right. And so who was it that you had going out handing out copies of this release to the truckers? Do you remember?
I am not aware of that information.
Okay. Did you know that Councilor McKenney was handing them out for you?
Now I do.
Okay. And now you do, for me telling you, or did you know before this?
Well, it was a lot of events, and I think it was mentioned that McKenney was out doing this. However, I was not directly involved, other than agreeing to offer this agreement.
Okay. And I understand also that you know the NDP Member of Provincial Parliament for Ottawa, Senator Joel Harden. Do you know him?
Yes.
Right. And he was contacting people and organizing events to raise money for your lawsuit, do you remember that?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And was it not the Ottawa City Councilor Catherine McKenney, an NDP Member of Provincial Parliament for Ottawa, Senator Joel Harden, who supported you and put you forward for that claim? Is that not correct?
That is not correct. I've stated that that was not true previously as well.
Right. And so I just want to bring you to sort of another statement that you had said when you were at the Leaders Summit for Action for Chinese-Canadians.
I would also like to clarify that the Leaders Summit has not occurred.
Right, but you gave a video.
Yes, correct.
Right. So can you agree to me, agree with me that you stated the following? It came about that the lawyers needed a lead plaintiff to stand up and speak about what was going on and really try to make a difference, because we weren't seeing any change in our community, which was not acceptable for anybody. And but being a Chinese Canadian, it is a bit of an odd role to play, because it's not something that is really necessarily supported or common within our culture. But I really saw the need for somebody, anybody, to stand up and speak for the people and help us out of the situation we were in, and the stars really aligned, and here I am.
Yes, that's true.
Thank you. Those are my questions for you, Ms. Lee, and then I just have a few for Ms. Delaune.
Before you continue, would it be all right to clarify my relationship with Joel Harden and Catherine McKenney? No? Okay.
Judge, if His Honor would like, that's fine.
There'll be a brief opportunity to reexamine it again, so.
So, Ms. Delaune, good morning.
Good morning.
So, Ms. Delaune, I understand just from your background, and I'm not trying to poke or anything of that, but I understand you were born around 1947 in Meadow Lake, Saskatchewan, is that correct?
I was born in Saskatoon, Saskatchewan, but grew up in Meadow Lake, Saskatchewan. And you've asked women their ages, so.
I won't, I won't, I'm not going to. I promise not to do that.
They can do the math.
Yes, all right. And I don't want to get into too much with your disability, and I'm very sorry for the struggles that you've had, particularly during the convoy and protest. But I understand that about 1961 is when you began to lose your sight, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. And despite that, you thrived... You obtained a bachelor degree in psychology from the University of Saskatchewan in 1974?
That's right, yes.
Right. And you completed your law degree at the University of Saskatchewan in 1984?
1983.
Eighty-three. And thereafter, you completed your Masters of Law at the London School of Economics, is that correct?
Yes.
Right. And how many jurisdictions are you a member of the bar in or a member of the solicitors group?
I was a member in good standing with the Ontario Bar and the New York Bar, but recently I resigned my membership from the Ontario Bar. I'm still active as a non... A retired member of the New York Bar, but I'm still licensed.
Right. And I understand that after becoming a member of the bar, you began to work for the Government of Canada, is that correct?
Yes.
Right. And you spent 10 years with the Department of Indian and Northern Affairs, Canada, is that correct?
It was more like 25 years. I'm just... just let me recorrect that. It was from 1990, September 1990, to April 2011.
Okay. And then you were also with the Department of Veteran Affairs, Canada, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And around that, in the 80s, you also incorporated a company called Delaune International, Inc., is that right?
That's correct.
And that company, it's still in operation?
Yes.
And is that company not a federal government contractor?
No.
No? But it does do government contracts and assists with, I believe, a lot of First Nations work, is that right?
It could, yes.
And you worked as a lawyer for the Government of Canada, is that right?
No, I was working on the policy side of the picture. I was not a justice lawyer with the Government of Canada. I was an executive.
Okay. And I don't know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask that way. Can you mind telling the folks what brought about your participation in this commission?
I had a phone call from the Commission, from Commission Solicitor, asking my permission to, first of all, have a conversation about my experience, and then asking my permission if my name could be put forward as a potential witness in this commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions for both of you, and have a good morning.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. So the next, I will call on the Government of Canada to briefly cross-examine.
May I just ask three questions? Your Honor, Ms. Lee, you described a lawless environment during the period of the convoy occupation, I believe, in reference to my friend's questions there, yes?
Yes.
Did that change after you obtained the anti-honking injunction on February 7th?
No.
Did it change by February 14th, the lawless environment that you described?
I don't recall exactly, but I would say perhaps some of it had subsided, but it was still present. If anything, it was more underlying and more desperate, in a sense.
You obtained an extension of the injunction on February 16th, is that right?
Correct.
And you showed us photographs on February 17th and 18th, though you couldn't recall which of those two dates it was, right?
I believe it was the 17th, yes.
Okay. And was there still a lawless environment as you perceived it at that time?
Given my experience personally, I felt that was the case.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you. Next, I will call on the Ottawa Police.
Good morning to you both. I just have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Lee. You spoke earlier this morning about the injunction. Did circumstances change after the injunction in terms of the level of threats that you were receiving from the community?
Following the injunction...
...threat, would you agree that you had multiple interactions with the Ottawa Police Service as a result of that?
Yes, that is correct.
You had made them aware of the threats that you were receiving?
The majority of the threats were through the internet and on certain things. However, I was receiving calls and messages to my personal devices. However, the nature of these messages, voicemails and calls, did not seem serious enough for me to make an official report. There was only one instance where there was a serious threat received by the RCMP that had been forwarded to the Ottawa Police that was investigated.
And the Ottawa Police actually attended your residence a couple of occasions as well, correct?
That is correct.
I just want to bring up one document, if you don't mind. It's OPS 3014460. See about halfway down the page, there's a subheading, Constable Islam and Constable Lemieux?
Yes.
And it appears as though there's notes under that heading in relation to the activities of those officers?
Yes.
If we could go to the next page, bullet number three, it says, "Mo and I spoke with..." and then, of course, there's obviously a redaction, "regarding the threats she has received from her involvement with the injunction related to the convoy protest and the horns." Obviously, we can see that there's a redaction here, but would you agree that on February 9th, you did in fact speak with these two officers from Ottawa Police Service?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And if you could look at that second sentence, it indicates she feels very supported by the OPS with this. Would you agree at this time that you had received the attention in relation to the threats from Ottawa Police Service that made you feel comfortable that they were managing that situation?
Yes.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, I'll call on the Democracy Fund, Citizens for Freedom and JCCF.
Hi to both of you. I'll just have a couple of quick questions for you today, and first I'll tilt them so they're facing in the right direction. You discussed decibel levels with Commission Counsel during the protests. Were decibel levels ever measured inside of your apartment, Ms. Lee?
Yes, they were.
They were? By who?
Me, myself.
How did you do that?
Through decibel measuring devices downloaded onto my phone. These devices... these applications had been... they had been researched to be comparable to actual physical decibel testing devices.
Can you give me the names of those applications that you used?
Off the top of my head, I believe one was called Decibel X or something along those lines.
Can I get an undertaking? Is that possible in this context? I hadn't checked.
Our rules do not provide for parties to request undertakings during examination.
All right. So you say you used multiple decibel apps?
There was two, you know, I believe it was called Decibel X, however, it's been some time.
Okay. And do you remember what exactly the decibel reading was?
The decibel readings, from my memory, ranged from approximately 75 decibels to at times 85 or 90.
Okay. When speaking with Commission Counsel earlier, you began to describe how you had been pleading with the protesters and said, "There's a certain frustration when the people that are supposed to help you aren't helping you." Do you recall making that statement?
Yes, I do.
Who were the people who were supposed to help you?
Those people were the Ottawa Police and bylaw services.
And what were they supposed to be doing?
They were, from my understanding, as a resident citizen and taxpayer, they were supposed to be supporting us and making sure us as the public and the community feel safe and that the laws are upheld.
And what laws did you feel weren't being upheld?
There were issues with noise, idling, parking, et cetera, illegal fireworks, illegal fires, public urination, public defecation, harassment on the streets, soup kitchens.
And there just wasn't any enforcement, in your mind, of those laws prohibiting those?
A lot of the time, I had spoken to officers directly. I had made calls to bylaws specifically detailing the incidences that were occurring. In one such occasion, I described fireworks in the vicinity of gasoline and other open fires, as well as things like alcohol and drugs. So that, to me, presented a safety issue, and therefore I reported it. However, as a result of my report, nothing came to it, and I was informed that the officers on the ground were to keep things safe despite the reality of the situation. And I was informed that the officers on the ground were to keep things safe despite the reality of the situation.
So in essence, the complaints that you made didn't result in enforcement?
No.
And you mentioned that you obtained an injunction in the context of your class action lawsuit that prohibited honking and that for a time after the injunction was granted, the honking diminished, but it returned after a time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And would it be fair to say that it returned after a time because your injunction wasn't being enforced?
I would say that I can't speak to exactly why it occurred, but I am, I would feel that enforcement would be a contributing factor.
Did you see any enforcement of your injunction?
No.
All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the next is the Ottawa Coalition. Any examination there?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I just have a few questions for both of you. Ms. De La Rond, can you just confirm approximately, how long have you been living in downtown Ottawa?
Thirty years.
And have you experienced or observed other protests or demonstrations in downtown Ottawa?
I've observed other protests in downtown Ottawa, but closer to Parliament Hill. They did not come to where I was living, never.
Thank you. You told us, Ms. De La Rond, about being concerned about wearing headphones or earplugs, about knocks on your door, about smoke alarm, or maybe not hearing smoke alarms. Why did you have that particular concern?
I was concerned because there was this smell. And I was informed as well about gas spills on the street, that there was open bonfires, that they were roasting food out a few meters from my building. So there was such a potential for a fire, a huge fire and an explosion. So I was concerned that if I could actually get those earplugs to work, then I wouldn't hear if my smoke alarm went off or if people were pounding on my door to say evacuate, evacuate.
And Ms. De La Rond, you told us a bit about the diesel fumes. Was that diesel fumes that you would just smell outside on the street, or did you smell them in your apartment?
It was very strong in my apartment. It permeated drapes, blinds, bedding, carpet. It, it had, the whole unit had a dull, gaseous odor about it.
Did you do anything about that after the protests were over?
Yes, yes. I got, eventually worked toward getting them cleaned, all of them.
Ms. De La Rond, you told us a bit about the honking and how you experienced that. After the protests were over, what was your experiencing about experiences with honking sounds?
Anytime I heard a honk of a horn, and particularly of a large vehicle horn, I could feel it sort of ripples through my body and I would feel that my nerves were still frayed.
In the immediate days and weeks after the end of the demonstrations, what was your experiences with horns?
Very much like that, that I kept hearing them, like phantom horns. I kept hearing them in my head. I also had phantom smells, too.
And by phantom smells or horns, I mean they're not there, but that's what you-
They're not, they're not there.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rond. Ms. Lee, I just have a few questions for you. There were some questions put to you about councillor McKennie and a member of provincial parliament, Mr. Harden. Had you ever had any interactions with them or met them prior to the class action being commenced?
No, I had not. Perhaps in passing on the street, but nothing, not, they didn't know who I was.
And there were some questions put to you about the injunction and what impact it had on the horns. On the day of the injunction argument of Monday, February the 7th, were you observing that hearing?
Yes, I was.
And were you observing or listening to anything else before or after that injunction hearing?
After, I did observe a Facebook Live video from one of the organizers who had ordered the truckers in general to stop the horns due to the injunction being put in place.
So what, you were watching something online? What was?
Yes, it was a Facebook Live video, I believe, from Chris Barber, if I'm not mistaken, though I can't be sure as to which organizer specifically it was. But they had been laughing about our lack of sleep and something about giving us a break from all the noise.
The, what did that livestream person, what did they say about the injunction? Do you recall?
They had said that they, I remember they were saying like, "Stop the horns, stop the noise."
And did you hear any, did you notice or observe any connection with that statement on the livestream video and what was going on outside?
Yes. Shortly after the video, the horns had subsided and for, it was like, like, I, I, like, just sort of thinking back to it, like, it's hard to not be a little dramatic, but it really was like, it was like this respite that had came. And it was significant, the silence that was present for some time.
You were following or observing some of the social media of some of the protest organizers?
Yes.
After the injunction was obtained, you told us about listening to a social media stream on that date. Did you hear or observe any other social media streams by convoy organizers speaking about the injunction after February the 7th?
Yes, I do recall after the first video. I don't recall exactly when this occurred, but the first video, I believe that the organizer had believed that, it's hard to say because it's, there was a lot of just words being spilled, but there was something about that we, not necessarily myself or the lawyers involved, or it was a general reference, I think, to like the city or the government or just the opposition, really, that they were going to give in to some demands, but after some time had passed, they had realized that no demands were being given and to, like, I don't remember the exact words, but there was a call to action to like, just let it rip.
And let what rip?
The horns.
And after observing that, did you notice any difference in the horns out on the street?
Yes, I did notice that there were some, I remember very distinctly, there were some confused horns because really, it sounds sort of crazy to attribute these kinds of descriptions to horns, but whereas before they were sure, I think, and like resounding, these were confused, almost as if, "Do I do it? Do I not do it? Do I do it? Do I not do it?" There was a little bit more hesitation in the honking.
And Ms. Lee, just a couple, final couple of questions. When we, you talked about measuring the decibel levels. Where were you measuring that? Was that on the street or was it in your home?
I had measured the, the, in reference to the decibel levels I had described, it was inside of my home. Though I had taken some on the streets where it was much louder, closer to 100 or more.
And your apartment, don't tell us which floor, but is it above or below a 10th floor?
It is above a 10th floor.
Thank you. You told us a bit about bonfires, seeing bonfires. We're unsure if we'll get any evidence about this from the Ottawa Police, but just from what your observations were, what were the bonfires like?
They definitely varied depending on the location that you went. There were quite a few of them. Some were small and just for warmth. Others were larger for, I think there was a pig, like a whole pig being roasted. And I think it was under a fire, but I can't be certain about that, but there was that. And there were several bonfires down Wellington Street, oftentimes on corners and intersections where there were people huddled around it, often accompanied by signs and flags.
Thank you. And then finally, you responded to a question from Ottawa Police Council about that you had expressed or were thankful that the police were managing the situation. What situation did you feel that they were managing?
I felt that they were managing my personal safety correctly.
And what about out on the streets? Did you think they were managing it from your observation?
No, I did not.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does Commission counsel have any, any brief follow-up?
No reexamine, thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to thank both witnesses for their coming forward to the commission and for their evidence. It, the commission appreciates you coming forward. I also want to thank counsel for the parties. It was very disciplined cross-examination, a very good start. And so we'll, we thank you both and you're, you're now relieved of your obligations. And someone can come forward and assist Madame De La Rond to-
Thank you, Commissioner.